Everyone, like to call our District 228 regular board meeting to the board's Bureau office.
This is Pieson.
Here.
Miss Bush.
Here.
Miss Locke.
Here.
Mr. Patterson.
Here.
Miss Solis.
Here.
Mr. Rickum.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
The forum, please stand on the floor, please.
Our board of leaders to the flag of the United States of America. In this republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item two, board minute approval. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the October twenty first, twenty twenty five regular meeting.
Awa.
Start it.
Moved by Mr. Patterson, secondmentis Pieson. Any discussion? You will call.
Mr. Patterson.
Hi.
Mrs. Pieson, hi. Ms. List of State, Ms. Locke.
Yes.
Ms. Solis.
Hi.
Mr. Rickum.
Hi.
I have three comments from the public. Do we have any public comment? Now moving on to reports, one superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Rickum. If you, board, if you had a chance to walk in, you might have taken note of the gratitude Thanksgiving tree that Bremen has, where students and staff are writing a little message of gratitude for the holiday season. So I would like to start with a message of gratitude to this Board of Education. On November fifteenth is Board of Educator, Board of Education Member Day. And on behalf of our district, our staff, our students, our cabinet, our team, and our community, just want to thank all the board members for your service. It's, sometimes it can be a thankless job, I'm sure, but we appreciate the support that you give to us and the community and the position. In that regard, we give you a little token of our appreciation, a tote bag and a gift card, a couple of you can enjoy. Just want to thank you formally and publicly for your service on board. As you're probably well aware, we're looking forward to getting together this weekend. It's the joint annual conference that the board attends. We have all seven members. Appreciate that participation as well. Looking forward to some good connection this weekend. In that same type of theme, want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and we won't get together again until after the holiday. If you're looking for a jumpstart on Thanksgiving season and you're available, the Excel Thanksgiving Feast is one of the top events that we have every year. It's this Thursday here at Bremen High School at eleven a.m. You can pop in at your convenience. Usually it's about an hour and a half, and our Excel students do all the work. They prepare all the food, the placemats, the centerpieces, highlight some of their work, and the team does a fantastic job. So if you're available and around, we'd love to have you, and we look forward to spending the holiday with you if you can make it. Thank you. So ahead.
Good effort, support. Moving on, principal reports.
Good evening from the Hawks. Just wanted to let you know a couple of things that are going on at Hillcrest. Starting tomorrow, our play for this fall, Little Shop of Horrors, will run tomorrow at four, Thursday at six, Friday at four, and four p.m. on Saturday. We'd also like to invite you to join us for Holiday at the Hill. It's a Christmas event scheduled for December tenth. It's open to all community members. Be pictures with Santa, me. There are going to be decorating ornaments, decorating cookies, wrapping gifts, and there'll be lots of fun activities, games, music, and hot cocoa as well. Our DECA organization is partnering with Beds Plus for a winter clothing drive, because a little warm makes a big difference. We're collecting gentle, gently used coats, hats, and new socks from now through December fifth. And one last thing, our flag football, one of our flag football student athletes, Angel Taylor, was honored as one of fifty-six girls in the state of Illinois, made the Chicago Bears All-State Flag Football Team. The team was honored with an award ceremony last week at Soldier Field. Go Hawks!
Good evening. On behalf of the Titans, can't believe it's almost Thanksgiving already. First, I'd like to congratulate Senior Nolan Landgrave and Junior Maggie Gormly for competing in the HSA cross-country state competition. They did us proud. Nolan will be graduating. He's been down there almost every year since he started with us, and the good thing is we'll have Maggie around for another year. We congratulate the seventy-two students who on November fifth were inducted into the Cronus Chapter of the National Honor Society. Like to thank the board members that joined us there for that evening. Our sponsor, Pete Sansoni, does just an amazing job with that program. Just this last Thursday, November thirteenth, we hosted a student and parent workshop, and it highlighted the academic success measures that we use at Tinley Park High School when we're monitoring student achievement. So our whole goal was to get parents in to sit with their student, look at the different academic measures that we use, you know, to monitor our students, and start that dialogue between parents and students about how their students are doing, how they're achieving, where there might be some gaps they need to fill. It was a very active, working conversational meeting, and it was extremely well received, so much so that we're going to put it on repeat, and we're going to do it again, and hopefully get another set of parents to come in and look at different measures from their STAR assessment, which gauges their reading comprehension, to just how we compare report card data, STAR assessment data, ACT data, how we use school links to tie that all together, and how they can track some of that in Power School. So it was nice to see these students having the conversations, having all of their data in front of them, and walking the parents through those different measures that we use. Our drama club, just like Hillcrest, will be performing the somewhat true tale of Robin Hood this weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Friday and Saturday are at seven, and Sunday is at two. And our Titan Band and Choir will have their winter concert on Wednesday, December tenth. The last part kind of blows me away that tomorrow, Ms. Dempsey and I will be heading over to Central Middle School to actually get our new eighth graders ready to come and be Titans and Bengals, which just blows me away that it's that time of year, and mark your calendars, because it's officially thirty-seven days till Christmas.
Good evening. Once again, thank you for all that you do, and happy Thanksgiving. Teresa and I were just talking before we started, and we were talking about this is the class of twenty thirty. It's really, really hard to pull this. So at Oak Forest High School, the classrooms are buzzing, they're reading, they're writing, they're doing math, they're doing science, but we're taking our fair share of enrichment field trips. And recently, our AP Physics and College Physics, one of those is a district class that we offer, headed up to Fermi Lab, and that was with our teachers, Mr. Hoagie and Mr. Gale. And the Fermi Lab, for those who aren't familiar, is the Department of Energy Lab that was built in the nineteen-sixties, I'm going to have to rely on my notes here, to study particle physics. They were able to take a tour of the main onsite control center and speak with two of the current staff members. One of them is a beam operator, and the other is a research fellow, and they were able to share with the students what they really love about their research and any challenges that, of course, they're encountering working at the Fermi Lab. So it was a really great enrichment experience for our students and district students as well. Last month, we also had the Illinois Directors of Student Activities Conference, and that was, there were over seven hundred students that attended. We sent twenty-five of our own Oak Forest High School leaders. And Dr. Boniface, along with students Chloe Prin, Maddie Martinez, and Brooklyn Kincaid, presented at two of the different sessions to over two hundred and fifty students there on the topic, amping up our activity. So congratulations to them. Last month, I mentioned that we had started a new Facebook highlight post called Beyond the Stripes, and I just wanted to share a little bit of information about our first edition that went out. And it was highlighting a student at Oak Forest High School, Junior Parker List. He is a history buff who happened to stumble upon the Hello Talk Language app, and his original intent was learning Chinese and Persian, but he was definitely surprised when he received so many requests from students over in China eager to practice their English. And so I'm just going to read you a tiny little excerpt of what was published in our Beyond the Stripes publication. It talks about, through these exchanges, Parker has gained an incredible understanding of what high school life is like in China, their culture and their daily struggles, but the most eye-opening lesson, he said, "We all have our own challenges, our own stories, and while they may be vastly different at our core, we're just all trying to navigate life in our own way." For Parker, these conversations are about so much more than language, they're about connection, about perspective, about stepping outside our bubbles and realizing just how much we can learn from one another. So just a really nice way for us to be able to highlight our students who are doing so many more things than just in the classroom or at school. And last but not least, I want to take a minute to once again congratulate our football team. Certainly, our head coach, Zach Stadick, and the whole staff on their awesome season. It's amazing. We've advanced to the final four. We'll be playing on Saturday at one o'clock at Providence High School in the semifinal game. A special shout-out to our all-state player, Danny Chough, on a great season. He, if you've seen any of the games, he's our quarterback there, and he's got an outstanding group of student athletes also behind him, and we're so proud of what they've been able to do, and we're wishing them the best of luck on Saturday. That's all from Oak Forest. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, board, from the Bricks for all that you guys do. First and foremost, I just want to have a couple of announcements of things we have coming up. We are currently hosting our second annual clothing drive. It started yesterday, and we actually had so many donations from staff and students that we had to move our location and relocate to a different room in the classroom or in the building, because we needed a full classroom for all of the things that we have. This is an opportunity for students and families to come in, sign up privately, so that they have an opportunity to have a private shopping experience in our program for themselves, for their family, siblings, their own children, some of them, just to get some last-minute holiday items, things that they may need, anything that's left over. We will make sure that we offer out to the rest of our two twenty-eight staff, and then from there, we will donate back to the Will County Share Fest, who has been helping us during the semester with a lot of donations. So if you have an opportunity to stop by and see that, please do so, that'll be running through December fifth. On Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, you'll be hosting our eighth annual Thanksgiving Feast for our Delta Academy and Achieve Students. It's one of our favorite days of the year. We have our students come out, we have the staff come and serve them. Our only ask of our students is that they send at least one thank you card to a family member or a staff member from a previous home school, just to say a little thank you before we go into the holidays. So that will be on Tuesday. We are also very excited, I can tell you, because we've been working very hard in TEP to get ready for the Excel Thanksgiving Feast that is on Thursday. I've been getting a sneak peek at the decorations, field decorations, the menu planning and things like that, because we're very excited. So we are thrilled to see that happen in two days already, which is crazy, I don't know how we're here. And finally, I just wanted to show you guys, in case you see these postcards, if anyone talking about this in the area, we have a new motto going on at Delta Academy called Come As You Are. It's not just because we like Nirvana, but it's also because this is the theme that the students kind of expressed to us, that they feel like we want them to come no matter what state they're in, good days, bad days, everything in between. So this is our new attendance motto, and we'll be sending home postcards, and you'll be seeing signs and things like that. We made a silly TikTok video last week to try to get them engaged with that as well, so that will be our new push, as we are trying to keep them coming in on these cold days as we head towards all the holidays. But that's it from the Bricks. Have a good Thanksgiving.
Good evening, everyone. Just going to turn on our slides over here. I think my colleagues here kind of hit the nail on the head, but we're gearing up for Thanksgiving, and Thanksgiving around Bremen High School means food drive time. So as you came in, some of our favorite sites are obviously, the hallway lined with boxes, it was kind of the buzz in the air, like the kids this week going to do all of their pickups in the community, and we're always shooting for that target of raising ten, or collecting ten thousand pounds of food to donate back to our local food canvases. So that's going on right now. I know we talked about Excel's Thanksgiving Feast. Hopefully, you caught a little bit of our CBS spotlight, they were featured on there, you got to see kind of the behind the scenes of some of their planning and prep, if you're able to join us for that. It's a really great event, and then also just another shout-out of appreciation to CBS for coming out and just spotlighting all of the great people and programs that we have at Bremen High School. It's a really exciting day for us. Tonight, I am happy to introduce three individuals from our JROTC program. We've got Colonel Prescott, Colonel Michael Prescott, come on up. First Sergeant Jared Stritt, and one of our students, Kenneth Allen Battle. I'm going to turn it over to them. We are so appreciative, and I want to start by thanking you all for giving us the opportunity to start JROTC at Bremen High School, and for the district, obviously, we have a district course as well. We're looking to grow the program, but I wanted to get these guys in front of you so they could share a little bit more about what the days look like, and you can hear from Kenneth about some firsthand student experience.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Colonel Prescott, retired. Just want to say, we made it. All right? We made it to District two-two-eight. I want to thank you for your time, your effort, your thoughts, and your prayers to bring us here. We're doing great things. We're going to do great things in the future. If you see on the, on the board back here, I'd like to point your direction here. All right? On the top there, first is, "Thank you for letting us be part of your mission, in your vision." This is part of your vision and mission, "Provide each student with the core values, knowledge, and skills in order to become a self-directed learner and global citizen." That ties into the ROTC mission, is motivate young people to be better citizens, quote unquote. This is accomplished by providing a leadership development program that fosters citizenship, character, personal accountability, and personal responsibility. Collectively, tied it all together, collectively, our mission is to provide students a variety of opportunities to grow and prepare them for graduation and post-high-school success by fostering partnerships with communities and higher educational institutions. So I think I tied it all in there. I think all our efforts are all built right in those missions, okay? So collectively, why that slide is up there, to say, hey, we are tied in to the education. We're tied into your philosophies. We're just bringing another entity for kids to grow with us, okay? So the next slide, I'll go on to the next one. Any questions on this one? Did we hit it? Okay, all right. Next slide here, just give you a quick overview, can't tell you everything we do, all right? Could be a long story, but I can hear a lot on. Currently, our strength is about twenty-two freshmen, sixteen sophomores, okay? Ten juniors, and about eighteen seniors. Total about sixty-six. We plan on doubling that next year to over a hundred and twenty, okay? That's going to be a collective effort between all the high schools, so I'll be counting on you guys, and everybody else, to spread the message that we're here, and we want to do great things. We can do great things together. Followed on by our weekly structure, pretty simple, okay? On Monday, cadet-led PE with learning objectives. This is where they get to plan and prepare what they're going to do for PE for that day. Tuesday is academics. Wednesday is drill and ceremony in our polo shirt, and talk about polo shirts. I think all of you have a polo shirt, a JROTC polo shirt in front of you for a token of appreciation. Thursday is academics, and Friday is our instructor-focused PE. Pass activities, leadership qualities, self-awareness and influence, leadership initiatives, leaders and team commanders, all right? Red, white, and blue day that we had here right before Veterans Day, and cadets assisted in parent-teacher conferences. Current activities, we just finished up our J-Lab, which is a junior leadership academy bowl that's online. We did quite well on that for the first year, so we're pretty happy where this is going to go. We support the Honor Society with their food drive, and we're working through that, and currently, we're in our cadet challenge, where the cadets have to perform a one-mile run, a shuttle run, push-ups, sit-ups, and a stretch, and we create a baseline for them, because we'll do this in the spring for their physical activities. Future activities, December nineteenth will be our first Promotion and Leadership Award Academy and Ceremony. That's when all our cadets will be either given a rank or a title, from battalion commander, the highest-ranking cadet you'll have in the school, to an executive officer, a special project officer, command sergeant major, and on down than all the teams. So all of them are looking at it, they've all been working hard on positioning themselves to take that leadership role. So we're looking forward to the outcome of that, the daily event that they come forward and talk to us about that. So any questions on that, on our current activities? All right, I want to introduce to my first sergeant, and he's going to introduce our cadets.
How you doing?
Good evening. This is Kenneth Allen Battle. He had something he wanted to say to you guys tonight, just a little bit about the program, what he's experienced, I think the beginning of it, I think the fine kind of funny, I think it's great. Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kenneth Allen Battle, and I'm a sophomore at JROTC. I think this is a good program. I actually think so highly of the program. I recommend it, and if your kids, if you have it, to put them in it. I'm going to tell you a little about my backstory from where I started into now. When I first heard I was in the program, I actually skipped the class the first few weeks to get out of it. Then I left this school counselor from a fake email posing as my father, hoping that would work. Fortunately, it didn't work. The program has not only taught me military cadence, but helps me in case I plan on going to college. JROTC is a must if you're in high school or college. It has taught me time management, goal-setting, leadership skills, who I am as a person, et cetera. Thank you for listening, and have a great rest of your life.
Thank you, Kenneth. All right? So that's one success story. We got several in the future. All right? Let's do this together. We're happy we're here, and let's make this happen. So we thank you. Any questions? All right?
It's great to see the program get up and running, and we'll be doing great things in the future. Moving on to Superintendent's Cabinet Reports.
Board, I'm very excited to stand before you tonight and present an award that we received from the National School of Public Relations Association. This award is for the hard work that goes into the Light Magazine every year over year. So we received an honorable mention. Dr. Sephora and I attended the award ceremony on Friday, and it was great to meet some of our surrounding district PR personnel and talk about our different accomplishments centered the light. Thank you so much for the resources to be able to put that out to our community, and we hope to continue doing it over here.
Good evening, board. For tonight's Operations and Technologies, Technology Report, I'd like to focus on school safety. Two weeks ago, members of our administrative team attended a safety conference hosted by District two-thirty with schools from across the South suburbs. The exchange of practices and challenges reaffirmed that our district is in a strong position to continue to lead in this work. Just as importantly, underscored the need to avoid complacency, and we are continually reviewing, adjusting, and stress-testing our prevention and response procedures. In that spirit, over the past two weeks, we've partnered with two of our feeder districts, both in one forty-three and Arbor Park, by sending our staff over to help them roll out some of their safety tools that we have in place in our district, strengthening consistency across our shared communities. Tomorrow, we will convene our third annual district-wide safety committee meeting, bringing together teachers, administrators, maintenance, and custodial teams, support staff, and security personnel. The agenda includes status updates, alignment around our safety protocols, and hands-on practice with scenarios such as reunification and emergency response. We will also conduct a full reunification walkthrough, so every member can see the end-to-end flow for verifying guardians and releasing students in a controlled manner. While we do not anticipate eating this process, we want to ensure, should it ever be required, we are prepared.
Good evening, board. This is the November Facilities Report. Our twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six Health Life Safety Kickoff Meeting is held on October fifteenth at the ISC War Office. The community team leaders reviewed the plan for the annual health life safety inspections, as well as explained multiple ISP loss reach-up list updates for fiscal year twenty-six. Our district schools will be scheduled to be inspected January twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. We had six different schools attend the first annual, this is a long one, it's the Local High School District Facility Leaders Collaboration. It was the first-ever one that we had. We had six different schools, districts show up. We met at District two-thirty. Each district leader talked about their ongoing and upcoming projects, that they're in the midst of starting or completing. We also had discussions, we also had discussions on other topics such as safety, capital improvement ideas, life safety planning, organizational charts, and other open topics that people wanted to discuss. These meetings are a good way for the facility managers among the local high school districts to collaborate and share ideas. We plan on meeting about four to five times a year, and we will be hosting our meeting at Bremen two-twenty-eight, once everyone asks. Pump the brakes. Give me a few, a few more. And then finally, last week, we had our first snow of the season. I'm sure everybody enjoyed it thoroughly like we did. The crews were on top of the snow early and had everything cleared and ready for school to start, and we actually received a few emails from staff members around the district saying how well our lives looked compared to the streets that they ended up navigating at the school. So I just wanted to give a little kudos to our making staff work for the high schools. And that is the human public facility.
They can pay by the word, and they can look at the titles for these meetings?
Yeah, somebody did.
Good evening, board. Board, the Special Education Cabinet Report for November, November. I want to celebrate the wonderful things by highlighting a couple of our special programs that are doing incredible things to support students. The PALS program here at Bremen High School helped out with the Bremen Food Drive this week through a service learning project. They assisted the National Honor Society with picking up contributions to the food drive from homes in the community. Students had a great time and enjoyed learning about giving back. And then the SOR program at Hillcrest High School has been celebrating and incentivizing students to meet goals related to grades, attendance, and behavior at Hillcrest. In October, they celebrated students who had ninety percent or better attendance with a caramel apple bar, and in November, their theme was Keep Calm for Cookies and Cocoa. And next Tuesday, they'll be celebrating students who had no disciplinary infractions with the deans during the month. Across the district, our special programs do great things to support our students, and I'm grateful for all of them.
From the World of Finance, property tax bills were released on November fifteenth with a due date of December fifteenth, which means that we should start receiving our property tax revenue sooner than we originally anticipated when the tax bills were delayed. We have received the first draft of our financial statements for fiscal year twenty-five, had no audit findings, and evidenced approximately a twelve percent increase in fund balances over the close of fiscal twenty-four. Auditors commended the district on sound financial planning and compliance with all general accounting and auditing standards. As of October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, having not yet received any of our property tax revenue, our operating fund balance is thirty-six point eight million dollars, with a working cash fund balance of nineteen point six million dollars. Currently, we're in the process of finalizing all of our new property revenue for the district's twenty-twenty-five tax levy, as well as confirming all of our expiring TIPS. All of these will be evidenced on the certificate of tax levy that will be on the December agenda. We've also been keeping a close eye on our federal grant funding, and since we last met, we have received our first payment for Title One, Title Two, and Title Four. The first voucher has been issued for IDEA on November twelfth, has not yet been processed by the comptroller, so hopefully I have a better update for that one next month. And then also in October, the first payments for state-mandated categorical grants were issued for free lunch and transportation. There has been no disruption in our evidence-based funding dollars as of November twenty-fifth.
Good evening, board. Personnel side, I just have one thing. With these monthly presentations, you guys can see that we've been attempting to continue to recruit and retain quality employees here at District two-twenty-eight, and through things like the Golden Apple Scholars, Indeed.com, and those types of things, we've begun to build our pool of support personnel and those types of things. So on Thursday, January fifteenth, we're going to participate in the Third Annual Southwest Job Fair. It's at Tinley Park Convention Center from eleven to two. So it's not necessarily an education-based type of job fair, but for paraprofessionals and custodial and maintenance staff, we're hoping to continue to- Uh, we're hoping to, uh, continue to, to raise that pool. Uh, last year, they claimed that, that they had almost two thousand people in attendance. So, hopefully it'll be a, a good endeavor for us. So, that's all.
Good evening, Board. I'm going to present our annual academic achievement report based on the Illinois Report Card. If you would turn your attention to the screen. Um, I repackage it this year mainly because school year '25 is gonna now set our benchmark and our baseline for data moving forward. Uh, so taking that into consideration, and I'm also gonna preview some changes that are gonna be happening coming in 2026. But, uh, just wanted to share out, um, our story here in District 228. As a reminder, these are our overarching during understanding that the board adopted in 2009. We do believe that all students can learn. Uh, we agree that students learn in different ways and have our bodies trained in, um, areas of need of improvement. We know most of our students are improving at a decent rate, uh, but they can do better. And we also recognize that a number of students aren't achieving where they could be and so we firmly believe that they can do better. And so, you're gonna see, um, and you've been hearing, we put a lot of different systems in place to support our students and we put in place a lot of different programs to believe all of our students have a path to success. Our overarching goals, we want our students to be college-inferred right by the time they graduate. Our different areas of focus, not only do we work on academic achievement, college-inferred development, but also the learning environment, to making sure that our students are safe, feel engaged, uh, to be engaged, to feel like they, um, have the ability to fail and pick themselves up in a safe environment. Uh, so it's not just physical safety, although that is very important. We also want social, emotional, and mental safety as well. And then, all the different data, these are just some of the data points that we track, uh, that we're gonna focus on tonight. So, in terms of academic measures on the state report card, there are five main areas and the biggest one being graduation rate. Um, this one's a little complicated because it takes into consideration four-year, five-year, and six-year graduation rates. We have our ELA, math proficiency making up fifty percent, and then science and EL progress to proficiency. So, I'm gonna talk about each of those. Our first one is graduation rate. I'm comparing it, um, over the last four years and you see it incrementally increasing every year. Um, and as I've just already mentioned, over the summer, this is the first time since two thousand, I think, fine, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, that we hit the ninety percent graduation rate, which is the state goal that students graduate ninety percent or more in four years. And the state average is eighty-nine percent. We've gotten there with a lot of support and help from the buildings. Um, we have strong support systems, but also a lot of credit recovery opportunities going on that have contributed to, um, hitting that ninety percent. The recommendation I'm bringing forward tonight of adding the Excel program to the diploma track is also gonna help with our graduation rate, because right now they have a certificate of attendance, not an actual diploma. So, we should see an increase in our grad rate, although it could be delayed and be counted in their five-year and six-year, but that will still help our graduation rate. A couple of terms, a few terms actually that I would bring to your attention. These are new terms that the state, um, is using, so just to make you aware. The average score is the score on each of the tests that the student takes. So, the average score in ELA, math, or science. And the state has established benchmarks for each of those at each grade level. Proficiency means that the student is on track with their learning. And the data that I'm gonna show you is the percentage of students on track for their grade level based on the ACT assessment. And then, a new metric that they're using is the student growth percentile. This is a comparison of how our students grew compared to their academic peers on the same test. What's, and this is something we used to talk about with EPAS, where members, um, that have been around, um, and we talked about explore planning ACT back in the day. We presented a growth model. That's what they're trying to do now at the state level. Students can actually show more gains in growth, but not necessarily hit the proficiency mark. Because if they're coming in lower, uh, it takes longer for them to reach that benchmark. And some students may never achieve that benchmark, but they're showing growth year over year. Still doing new terms. In terms of our ELA proficiency, this is, uh, now, it's not just English. This, uh, marker is English, reading, and writing averaged together. So, it's three parts of the ACT combined, okay? It's not just English by itself. Our average ACT score in the district is fifteen point seven, with the state being eighteen, and the benchmark for grade eleven is eighteen. Thirty-four point nine percent of our juniors have met the proficiency benchmark of eighteen. And you see our growth percentile there is forty-seven point one. So, our students' growth was slightly below the state, so the state will always be fifty percent. It will always be in the middle, and then schools are gonna be compared above and below fifty. Our students grew faster in ELA than forty-seven percent of comparable students in the state. This is considered, um, average growth for, um, for our students. In terms of math proficiency, our average ACT score is sixteen point nine, with the state at eighteen point eight. The benchmark in math is nineteen. Twenty-three point five percent of our juniors have hit the proficiency benchmark. Our students' growth last year was actually slightly above the state. Um, it is considered average growth. So, our students grew fifty point six percent or more than other students in the same comparison. In science, our ACT average was seventeen point four, state at nineteen. The benchmark is actually nineteen. Thirty-six point six percent of our juniors met that proficiency. Um, the state did not calculate a growth percentile for science. English learners, so this is what's called the EL P2P, progress to proficiency. I'm gonna start in the enrollment box and I'm gonna go clockwise. So, one thing to be aware of, our EL enrollment for the district is fourteen point nine percent. That's up a little over five percent in two years. Today, we're up another three percent. We're up to eighteen percent English learners, while the state is seventeen and a half. The access test is the test, um, the students take every year whether they're receiving services or not. Um, it's on a six-point scale. Expanding four point oh is where we want, um, to work towards, because they need a four point eight to actually exit out of service. So, we're just, uh, shy of, uh, twenty percent of our students in that four to six band. Sixteenth of our students proficiency out. That's up from seven the previous year. So, of that twenty percent that is in the four to six range, two and a half percent of our students proficiency out. So, that is an area that we continue to focus on with our students. On the student success measures, those were the five academic measures. Now, we're gonna take a look at the three student success measures. Ten percent coming from chronic absenteeism, eight point three from FOT, which is our freshman on track, and then six point six percent for our climate survey. This is the one measure, so chronic absenteeism, you want the data to go in the opposite direction. You want this number to get smaller. So, we started almost forty percent four years ago. We're down to just over thirty percent for chronic absenteeism. We've been working really hard across the district. Buildings have had different attendance initiatives, different slogans out there to try to promote, um, students being in school. We're also really putting a focus on the challenge curriculum, because as you know, in order to get that distinguished, um, honor at graduation, meaning ninety-five percent attendance average junior and senior year. Our freshmen and sophomores are really strong. They're getting close to that ninety-five percent attendance, and then we trickle off a little bit junior and senior year. So, we really need to focus on, um, our upperclassmen being in school. Our freshman on track, oh, year over year, again, this is another area where we see significant growth and significant effort. Um, because as you remember, you can answer this in your head, freshman on track equates to, one of our measures in our academic area, graduation. So, if our students are on track freshman year, they're more likely to graduate in four years. So, we've been putting an emphasis there. Ninety-six point nine percent has been our highest FOT rate to date. Illinois Five Essentials Survey, this is administered to all students, staff, and parents. Um, it opens in January, it's, it's open for a couple of months. Um, students and staff and parents provide feedback on effective leaders, collaborative teachers, involved families, supportive environment, ambitious instruction. We get, um, points based on our student participation. So, the more students participate and respond to the survey, the more points we get. We had ninety-four point five percent to ninety-eight percent attendance across the district. And I'll show you what that means for, um, our buildings. So, all of that work, all of that improvement at the district level could not be done without the buildings. So, I'm gonna introduce this visual in terms of a house. If all of our teens are keeping their house functioning and looking at different aspects of their house and improving different metrics, we succeed as a district. So, that's what we're gonna talk about here. So, these are the eight metrics that I just went over at the district level. And based on the points, we then are given a designation. To be exemplary, you have to have ninety-three point oh-two points out of a hundred. The next layer is commendable. If you look at that band there, fifteen to ninety-three is a large group of schools. Kind of remember that, because a little bit later, I'm gonna foreshadow what the state is kinda moving towards. But that's a big group. Um, and then, as you move down the list, you could be susceptible to school improvement, um, from the state. Okay, well, category report that all four of our schools are commendable. We have no underperforming subgroups. Our graduation rate is higher than sixty-seven. Um, and the data I'm gonna share with you, we get points in every category based on how we improve from the year before. As I mentioned, school year '25 is gonna set our benchmark, and I'm gonna preview school year '26, there'll be some changes. So, here we go. Bremen High School. Everything that you see in green was our improvements over the previous year. So, I'm gonna start down here with the climate survey. It just, what you wanna look for is the first number to be as close to the second number as possible. Bremen received full points because they had over ninety-five percent participation in the climate survey, so they got the full point there. Um, where Bremen saw the biggest gains was in improvement in their ELA proficiency in all subgroups and math proficiency in almost every subgroup. And their grad rate is comparable to the district. So, they are at, uh, ninety percent. You'll notice at the top of the house, so last year, they had seventy-one point two-eight points out of a hundred. They went up to almost seventy-five because of those areas in green. Tinley Park last year was at eighty-three. This year, they're just under eighty-five. Their biggest gains this year, uh, they had improvement in proficiency in all their groups of ELA. So, they're really close to receiving full points in that area. And most of their students, um, improved in math. And they also received full points for their climate survey. Hillcrest. Notice they were just, oops, just shy of the climate survey. They had ninety-four point five percent of the students participate. They had to be ninety-five to get full points. Um, they have significant gains, um, first of all, in their graduation rate. This really, uh, they put a lot of emphasis on freshman on track and also improving, um, grad, uh, credit attainment at every grade level. They went from an eighty-two percent last year to an eight, year four, to an eight-seven percent in school year '25. So, they got a really good boost in their points here. Uh, all of their subgroups improved in ELA, so this number has gone up and almost all of their groups went up, um, in math. Hillcrest also, um, obtained a new subgroup. So, data is only reported if there are twenty more students in a subgroup. So, a new subgroup for Hillcrest is their Hispanic students. And then, lastly, at Oak Forest, last full year, they were eighty-four point eights. They are just shy of ninety. Remember, ninety-three was the cutoff for exemplary. They had significant gains. Notice their graduation rate, they got full points there, because to get full points, you need to be ninety-three percent or higher. Climate survey, they also got full points. Um, their ELA and math proficiencies are significantly higher in the district and very close to the state average. Science proficiency was also well above the state. So, uh, the science proficiency was fifty-two, fifty point two percent, while the state was only forty-four point six. And their math growth, they exceed state's percentile. Oak Forest's growth is in the fifty-fourth percentile. So, again, if every house, every school is managing different aspects of this data, then we succeed overall as a district. So, some takeaway, some things that we're focusing on, graduation rate. Again, we're continuing to focus on credit and concept recoveries to ensure our students are earning credits. But now, we're shifting the focus to improving GPA, because we know that's contributing also to the challenge curriculum. That shift of Excel to a diploma track will also help increase our grad rate. In ELA proficiency, every building is doing a reading initiative. We are using Star to Progress Monitor three times a year, so now we can monitor how our initiatives are having an impact on reading. We are focusing on our EL students' language development, which not only will help with access testing, it will also transfer over to ACT. And we're doing ACT prep in all of our courses, core courses, um, with a second practice test in January. In math, we're continuing interventions such as interventionist tutoring in all of our schools, also the growth program. We are also focusing on our top ed students by providing opportunities to accelerate them into a higher math class. So, if they were in math one this year, they have potential of doing a booster over the summer to get into honors math two. Same thing for math two to math three and getting into AP power. And then, um, I'm gonna throw in a new term here, which I'm gonna introduce. So, we're not gonna focus on chronic absenteeism, we're focusing on consistent attendance. Again, when students are here, we love having our students in the building. When they're here, they're learning, and that's contributing to our attendance rate. Um, and we're stressing the challenge curriculum target of that ninety-five percent. So, I introduced the concept of the house because there is a potential change. Uh, IFI is doing some listening tours right now of what school year '26 metrics are gonna look like. And the first thing that they're doing is changing that commendables. Remember, that band was fifteen points to ninety-three points. They're gonna split that into three different levels. Commendable, approach and developing, there'll be no more targeted. Comprehensive, that becomes the bottom designation where the state will come in and provide additional support. What does that mean in terms of students, that's our school designations? Instead of ten percent of the schools in Illinois being exemplary, now they'll be twenty-eight. And then, you'll see the breakdown of the percentage of schools for each band. So, that's one significant change that they're making. The next change is coming with the houses. Instead of eight indicators, they're going to six. And they're coming, um, they're adding this idea of core indicators and elevating indicators. So, proficiency, ELA, math, science, student growth in ELA and math, and grad rate are core indicators. How a school does in those three areas will set the designation. Then, they're gonna look at EL progress to proficiency, consistent attendance, and climate survey. Depending on how those results show, those can actually elevate and change a school's designation a level up or a level down, depending on how the performance goes. So, let's talk about it in different, I'm gonna start at proficiency and go clockwise. So, proficiency, instead of having separate indicators for English, math, and science, is gonna be a composite, combined score, proficiency score. That's gonna be the first change. Student growth, there's no more freshman on track, and there's no separate ELA or math growth. That's gonna be combined into a composite of ELA and math. Graduation rate is gonna stay the same, average of four-year, five-year, six-year. That can't change, because that's a federal required, um, indicator. Climate survey is also gonna remain the same, ninety-five percent student participation will give you full points. And then, consistent attendance is gonna replace chronic absenteeism. So, we're gonna focus more on the positive, is the percentage of students present for ninety percent or more. So, the school, and then EL progress to proficiency, the only change here, the calculation stays the same, but they're gonna have different benchmarks for elementary and, and grade school. I mean, I don't expect you to like dive into that, but basically, what this will help us do is know the benchmarks in the different areas. So, as I mentioned, to get full points in graduation rate, you have to be ninety-three percent or higher, and then have the breakdown. So, now we know our targets and the percentages that we need to focus on. I'm gonna come back to that, but let's take a look at how this is gonna work. So, as we mentioned, the core indicators, proficiency, student growth, and graduation. In this example, the school will start out as commendable. You guys can see the bands up here, the color coding, right now. Based on student growth, that is the highest area, so this school is commendable. But, the climate survey, they got full points, which is exemplary. That actually kicks the designation up to exemplary. So, that's what they're saying, is these indicators can elevate and raise a school's designation. What does that mean for it? So, kind of forward thinking, I'm gonna go back. We know our schools are doing really well for survey. We're at commendable and exemplary, we're really good here. We're really good with graduation rate. We can focus on our consistent attendance, get that number up, we're gonna be in a good spot. The danger is, and I don't think we're gonna be in this area, but if any of our categories fall here, so if our graduation rate, for example, was low sixty-six percent, we would automatically be in comprehensive status, regardless of whatever else we do. So, there are some things where we have to make sure that none of our subgroups fall in comprehensive, because then our designation would drop a level. Questions, comments or questions?
Can we go to definition of consistent attendance? Are they still being people who go on field trips?
Yeah, well, field trips are considered class. It's excuse absences. You know, if you get told to be accused absent if you're all sick, it counts against you. If you take a mental health day, it counts against you. Yeah. Any other questions? Guys, I'm looking over your head.
Thank you.
Moving on, four point four, any further requests?
Yes, we do, sir. Since the last regular board meeting, we received the following Freedom of Information Act requests. John DeGanis requested current academic year compensation report for all staff and administration. This is completed. James Wooton requested all receipts attached to all No Vendor or P Card entries in the general ledger report for Tinley Park High School. Attach all receipts and descriptions of these entries July first, twenty nineteen, and November seventh, twenty twenty-five. This request is completed. James Wooton requested all entries in the Tinley Park High School general ledger related to or in reference to the Tinley Park Chamber of Commerce, July one, twenty nineteen, and November seventh, twenty twenty-five. This request is completed. James Wooton requested an itemized list of invoices and or receipts for the top five vendors paid each year by Tinley Park High School, January one, twenty nineteen, and November seventh, twenty twenty-five. This request is completed. James Wooton requested employment contracts for Michael Mongin, Brian Givens, and Wendy Podludniak, July one, twenty nineteen, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. This request has been completed. W requested records, communications, or documents concerning discussions about the following. Equal Opportunity Employment Commission handling a FOIA request case number eight-two-zero-dash-two-zero-two-two-dash-zero-zero-five-zero-six-zero. National Endowment for the Humanities handling a FOIA request case number twenty-two-dash-twenty-six. Michael A. Ayeleen, correspondence with the EEOC and NEH. Iowa Open Records Law, chapter twenty-two point two, Iowa Public Information Board. This request is completed. Taquina Delacy requested vendor information, contracts, invoices, billing records, service type, and insurance documentation related to pupil transportation using vehicles designed to carry ten or fewer passengers for the period of July one, twenty-three to present. This request is completed. Joy Martin requested documentation on employment from nineteen eighty-nine for TRS. This request is completed. James Wooton requested all receipts and emails attached to all entries in the ledger for the Titan drawdown. In addition, all electronic communications and information about the Titan drawdown. This request is being completed. James Wooton requested all receipts and documentation for all reimbursement entries in the general ledger report for Tinley Park High School. Attach all receipts and descriptions of these entries. This request is being completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to four point five, any board member requests?
Two things. First of all, I was able to attend the National Honor Society at Remen and Tinley. Both were impressive events. I'm sorry I missed the whole question one, but it just reiterates how amazing your students are and the things they've been able to accomplish. And also, congrats to whoever had anything to do with the CBS coverage. I was proud to be a board member and an alumni. It was amazing. Thank you.
Any other board member reports? I was able to attend three out of four schools. I got to Hillcrest, Tinley, and Remen for their NHS inductions. It's a good, strong, good, strong number of new inductees at all three buildings. Especially Tinley, that was a particularly massive number of inductees. That ceremony took a while. But it's always, it's always good to see our students as they progress in their academic lives. Moving on, new business items, five point one through five point four, document orders.
Item five point one is the bills, attendance to bills, payroll, and CBS bills. These items are being recommended for full board approval. So.
Move by Mrs. Gleason, second by Mr. Patterson, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Mrs. List, aye, Ms. Lott, aye, Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Item five point two is the twenty twenty-five Country Cove Hills Plaza tax abatement resolution. This item is being recommended for a full board approval.
So move.
Second by Miss Gleason, second by Mr. Patterson, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Mrs. List, aye, Ms. Lott, aye, Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Item five point three is the resolution authorizing intervention in property tax assessment proceedings. This item is being recommended for a full board approval.
So move. Second.
Move by Mrs. Gleason, second by Ms. Lott, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Ms. Lott?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Item five point four is the winter twenty twenty-five athletic fit results totaling one thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-three cents. This item is being recommended for a full board approval.
So move. Second.
Move by Mr. Patterson, second by Ms. Lott, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Lott?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Item five point five, Dr. Boswell.
Board, item five point five is an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Oak Forest with any village in order to share our camera footage or give them access to our building for first responders. We want to have an intergovernmental agreement with them laying out the roles and responsibilities of each side. Our attorneys have reviewed this intergovernmental agreement with the city of Oak Forest, and this provides them that card access and camera access for the universities.
So move.
Second. Move by Mrs. Gleason, second by myself, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lott? Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Item five point six and five point seven, Dr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Wickham. Five point six are the curriculum handbook changes, board numbers. I did leave off one item, so I wanna bring that to your attention. It's just a name change. It's Introduction to Criminal Justice. We wanna change it to Intro to Criminal Justice in Law to be consistent with the sequential course, which is criminal law, so that students have some clarity there. Otherwise, adding tonight, Junior ROTC two. And then the changes for that Excel program to move from certificate of attendance to diploma, needing to add some additional forces. These are being recommended for full board approval.
So move. Second.
Move by Mr. Patterson, second by Mrs. List. Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Ms. Lott?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Item five point seven, there is no action that needs to be taken since I did my presentation during the cabinet.
Thank you. Moving on, five point eight and five point nine, Dr. Boswell.
Thank you. Item five point eight is for the school maintenance project grant. The fiscal year twenty twenty-six school maintenance project grant application period is currently open through January thirtieth. This is a dollar-for-dollar state matching grant program of providing awards up to fifty thousand dollars to grantees exclusively for maintenance or upkeep of buildings or structures for educational purposes. There is no limit to the cost of the project. However, grantees will not exceed fifty thousand dollars per grant award. An applicant shall provide a match from local funds equal to the grant amount requested. For submitting the application, local Board of Education is required to hold a duly convened meeting and must, A, authorize a school maintenance project grant application, B, reserve local funds to cover the district's portion of the project cost, and C, have not started any of the work listed on the application. We are going to submit the grant application for the full fifty thousand dollars in attachment to the Tinley Park domestic water and lighting upgrade project that's anticipated to take place over the upcoming summer break. At this time, we're asking the Board of Education to approve the application submission as described. This is being recommended for a full board.
So move. Second.
Move by Mr. Patterson, second by Mrs. Gleason, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lott?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
And item five point nine is the elevator review recommendation. Actually, at this time, we need a little bit more time to vet the contractors, so I'm gonna recommend.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, item six, personnel recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Wickham. Under lead is Jessica Bogus, Caitlin Leiden, Alex Marin. Under employment, Kwalid Nisrein. And under resignations, Matthew Erner and James St. Klosky. Also, under changing position, he is here in attendance tonight. He's been a special ed teacher before since two thousand nine. Serves as the boys and girls head tennis coach and the assistant athletic director at Tinley Park. And he's being recommended to be the next athletic director at Tinley Park effective July one, twenty twenty-six. All those items are being recommended for a full board approval.
So move. Second.
Move by Mrs. Gleason, second by Mrs. List, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye. Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lott? Aye.
Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
At this time, I get a motion to move to close session to consider information regarding the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, five ILCS, one twenty, subsection two, seat one. So move. Move by Mr. Patterson, second by Ms. Lott, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Lott?
Aye. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.